Meeting to order and thank everyone for their attendance. I would alert everyone that Shannon Kane will not be with us today. She is out on business. Rosemary Wilson is with family. And then I just got a call from Bobby Dyer. He's sick. So I think we're going to be okay, though, Mr. City Attorney. We'll have some more people come in here. But all that being said, we'll go ahead and get started. Look forward to a good meeting. And we'll start with Ron, why don't you just get on up there and stay up there? Because you've got most of these reports, except for Holiday Lights. I'm glad you don't have to make that one.
My colleague's taking the brunt of that one, yeah.
Okay. We'll start with the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame.
Absolutely. Mayor, members of council, you may recall in the fall that we had a visit from Virginia Sports Hall of Fame announcing their desire to come to the city of Virginia Beach. And they now are in full swing for that process. They're locating here. And unfortunately Eddie Webb had a family emergency, the executive director. So we have Chairman of the Board, Joel Rubin, who's going to give you an overview of how the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame is evolving and what they're looking to do here in the city of Virginia Beach.
Very good. Thank you, Ron, Joel. We're glad to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And please pass on to Eddie. We wish him the very best.
The members who are...
...for his family emergency.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. What I'm going to describe to you today, and just, I guess, a quick background. When I first came up here, I guess, back, when was it, the fall, Dave? We were talking about, at the time, a large facility down at the Oceanfront that was going to include a fieldhouse and Hall of Fame and an event center. What we ended up doing was going to Armada Hoffler, to Town Center. Because I work near Town Center. I love Town Center. We all love Town Center. And as we more and more looked at it, as I'll describe here, it really is the absolute ideal place for what we're trying to do. And nobody has said more good things about Town Center in the last few months than I have, across this region and across the state of Virginia. So the Hall of Fame and Town Center, it's a win-win and a bold new way to engage audiences. Okay? Just a quick background. We are the official Hall of Fame of the state of Virginia. As you know, in 2005, there was a decision made between the city of Portsmouth and the Hall of Fame to build a large 32,000-foot educational facility, interactive facility, on High Street in Portsmouth. The city of Portsmouth made that happen by pledging a half a million dollars a year in subsidy. Those dollars all went away. And there's just no way to operate a museum of that size without government assistance, particularly in a city that doesn't have the tourism numbers that you have in a city like Virginia Beach. So we're now actively marketing the business, the building for sale. Devaris, by the way, Virginia Beach Company is handling that. So we're changing our model. We had to look at ourselves like every other nonprofit in the country needs to be doing, and looking at how it operates, and changing our business model, to get away from being dependent on government assistance. And so, as you'll see, we're creating a new pedestrian tour, and we'll be doing programming. And those are the two things that we're going to be doing here. What, I'm the chairman of the board. What our board basically says is we need to be relevant, continue to be relevant as the state's Hall of Fame, and a state that produces a tremendous number of athletes and some great colleges. Be sustainable, financially sustainable. And we got that from the General Assembly as well. And we needed to be bold. We want to continue honoring Virginia's finest athletes. Been doing it since 1972. Over 300 have been honored over that time. We want to engage more residents and visitors. Because right now, in Portsmouth, you're sort of limited in what you can do. We wanted to reduce our operating costs and financial dependence on government, build more private sector support, and this is a key, be a true partner with our host city. We didn't want to just plop ourselves down. We wanted to give back to the community that's hosting us. And also change our governance to be more locally focused. Any organization, anybody that's part of a statewide organization knows how challenging it is when people are coming from all over the state. Our new governance is going to be very much Virginia Beach-focused, because they can touch and feel and be part of this, and lead us to sponsorships and memberships. Town Center to us is great. It has three things that make it an ideal urban venue: density, demographics, and destination. Ample programming venues, which is only getting better now because of the Zieders Theater that's going to be coming on. And we formed a real good partnership with Mike Zider. So that's going to be a 300-seat, 150-seat on top of the Sandler Center, and on top of the Weston and the other hotels and other places that are in Town Center. Great spaces for Walk the Hall, which you'll see, integrating technology into what we're doing, which is a major focus, obviously, for this city, because of the big pipe that's coming in. And Virginia Beach wants to be viewed, as it should be, as a technology leader. And as I mentioned, great opportunities for sponsorships and partnerships. We do not want to operate a building anymore. We learned, over the last 12 years, that operating a building, and we started out as seven days a week, operating a museum, that it's extremely expensive to staff, to heat, to cool, to light, et cetera. And without that money coming in from another source, like the government, we can't do it. So that's why we went to Armada Hoffler and suggested this new model called Walk the Hall. And what we're going to do, and what we've discussed with Armada Hoffler, and we're about finalized all our locations, as you'll see, is that we're going to create displays. They're going to go in the Clark Nixon Tower, Weston, the Armada Hoffler Tower, Columbus Center 1 and 2, and on 249 Central Park Avenue, where the Armada Hoffler construction lobby is. And you will take a tour. You'll go around to each of these places. We'll eventually have an app to take you around, to show you where you're going. And then, while you're there, and this is the give-back to Town Center, you go eat. You go shop. So we're slowing down the experience in Town Center for people, so they can then spend money there, taxes of which come back, of course, to us. And then, we can change our displays regularly, and stage our programs. And then, this is great for sponsors of these displays, because now they're getting a lot more visibility. If you put your name on one of these displays, you know a lot more people are going to see it. These are the locations. Did you see, like, Clark Nixon, our plan is to put our, which you'll see in a second, our Hall of Honor, which is the names of all of our inductees. And then, you can go with the Art Institute. By the way, there's a letter from the Art Institute in your package, because Marilyn Burstein, who runs that, loves this, because of the opportunities this creates for her students to do graphic design. We're talking about sports, fashion shows. They like to make food for our events, because they have a big culinary department. So she was all into that, and we love working with them. Again, more of this integration with Town Center. We're not just plopping ourselves down. We're integrating with Town Center. And then the others, the BB&amp;T lobby. We're also talking to Pembroke Mall, because we have a number of exhibits that don't really work in Town Center, and Pembroke Mall is interested. And matter of fact, Mr. Hanson, I'd love to get those into some other places in the city as well, like rec. centers or libraries or sites. We have a lot, we have $2 million worth of displays, paid for by somebody else, that are now available to come into Virginia Beach. Now, the Clark Nixon Lobby. Y'all have all walked into that lobby. You know those wooden panels that are either side. The plan is that we would create those Plexiglas panels over there that would list the names of all the inductees. They'd be clipped on, in those slats, right? And then, on the other side, as you saw, would be, that display over there would be stuff that would talk about the new class, the next year's class. So we'll have a big event in there on the Friday night of our induction weekend, which, by the way, that'll be April 6th and 7th. Could be a big weekend here in Virginia Beach. Here's another look at another. This is the 249 Central Park. These are existing displays that we have, that we can put over in that lobby. We're going to do one, this is like as Columbus II, where we'll honor Virginia's coaching So, as I say, we're finalizing right now, and working on the exhibits and what's going to be in each of them. The Weston Hotel's very excited about having us, because we're talking about doing a big display there called "The Year in Sports," which will be pictures provided by newspapers across the country of the major, and even minor, events that happened in sports. We'll work, change that out every year, because they know we're going to be doing events there, and they are very excited about partnering with us. It's been a great partnership. This, our Hall of Fame Weekend is really when it all comes together. We've been doing this in Portsmouth for the last, you know, 40 years, whatever, as a banquet in a hotel. Now, our plan is to do this. We will have a reception, possibly in, like, the Miller Room in the Sandler Center, for sponsors and members and the inductees. But then, we will push everybody into the theater to do our induction. So it'll be a theater event, rather than a dinner, like a typical dinner with chicken or whatever. And then, when we're finished with that, around 8 o'clock or so, we'll push everybody out into Town Center and go spend your money there. This benefits the merchants and the restaurants in Town Center, or the bars. Next year, there's a good chance that Frank Beamer will be going in as the coach at Virginia Tech. So we're expecting a very large crowd, and we figure that all the tech people will go over here, and all the UVA people will go over here, and never the twain shall meet. So what's going to happen is, that night, everybody's going to get something out of this event, not just the Sandler Center. We want them to go eat in restaurants. This is the whole point of this thing, is to let everybody else share in the value of the Hall of Fame coming here. You're going to get extensive news, and that's one thing you should know. The Hall of Fame creates a lot of news during the year. When we induct people, even when they die, there's stories everywhere when a Hall of Famer dies. But particularly when we announce, late in the year, in January, who's going in, and then the event itself. And then that night, with the event, people interacting with the inductees and taking pictures with them, and this sort of thing goes all over the state. And of course, these are people coming from all over the state. It's not just Hampton Roads people. I mean, we induct, like I said, a coach like Beamer, or athletes that come from other parts of the state. I think Heath Miller, for instance, who was a huge player for the Steelers for many years. He's from southwestern Virginia, went to UVA, played for the Steelers. So you can have people coming in. When we put Heath Miller in, I don't know what year it'll be, it could be this year, who knows? That are coming, friends and family from where he lived, the UVA crowd that's around here, and then, we're talking Steeler Nation, which is crazy, as anybody who follows pro football knows. They're up there with the Redskins and the Cowboys. The programming we intend to do is really key, because, you know, a Hall of Fame basically lives sort of in the past, looking at athletes and coaches whose careers are done. To be relevant, as I said at the beginning, we need to be in the present. And people live sports in the present, as everybody knows. Yet, last year's team, next year's team. Yesterday's game, tomorrow's game. And so, for instance, Bracket Monday. Everybody gets their brackets on, the NCAA tournament starts on that Sunday, Selection Sunday. Then what happens? You've got to fill it out by Wednesday and turn it into somebody with $5, so you can go win a pool, NCAA pool. We're going to have a Bracket Monday. So everybody's sitting there going, "I don't know how to pick between Valparaiso and Ohio University," or something. We're going to have experts up there to help you do all that. Be fun, okay? Fantasy sports, things we'll tell you about in a second. Predicted events, like ACCC's basketball season starting. We have access to a lot of people that can come in and help us be part of that. Sports and Society, which is huge now, in terms of, you know, health and money and this sort of thing. The rules, talking about the rules in baseball, football, basketball, that sort of thing. The opportunities for alumni weekends, which, again, bringing more and more people into Town Center, or into Virginia Beach. I mean, they don't have to just stay at Town Center or eat there. They can stay all over the city. But Virginia Beach becomes the Hall of Fame city. We're the hub for sports in Virginia. We're not just Blacksburg, or not Charlottesville, or Williamsburg, or something. Everything happens around the Hall of Fame. Chasing the Dream, which will be a program, a series we intend to do with the Zieders Theater, Zieders American Dream Theater, all about people that are constantly chasing the dream of getting into, becoming a Division I player, or winning a championship, or what it is. Our first program is coming up. We're real excited about this. It's going to be on August 24th, three weeks from Thursday, and it will be a fantasy, it's called Pro Football Fantasy Fest. Some of, I don't know, have any of you played fantasy football, Mr. Davenport? I know you do, Mr. Jones, Mr. Vice Mayor. He won his league last year. This is huge. There's 50 million people in this country that play fantasy football. And what's, what we're going to do, we're not going to do a league that night, but we're going to, this is, the 24th is right before the drafts. Most of the drafts happen that next weekend and the following weekend. So we're going to have, first of all, we'll have William Fuller and Ken Easley will be there. And Ken Easley, by the way, is going in the Pro Football Hall of Fame this coming weekend in Canton, Ohio. So both of them will be there. But the key is going to be this panel with Andy Fox, who has won his fantasy league six times over the last several years. And he's, you know, pretty crazy with fantasy football, as I'm sure Mr. Fisher will tell you, he is addicted to fantasy football. And we'll have a panel. And by the way, I put out on Facebook this past week, looking for people to be on the panel, who've won their leagues. One of the first responses I got back was Brian Moran, who is the Secretary of Public Safety for Virginia. They have a league in the governor's office, and he won it. I said, "Brian, please come down to Virginia Beach that night." He said, "I'm in." We'll have the Secretary of Public Safety. So if you're worried about whether this is gambling or not, he is the guy in charge of the state police. Am I right, Dave?
Yeah, pretty close.
So he'll be there. And our Walk the Hall tour should begin in early 2018. It's just going to take a little time for us to put all our exhibits and everything together. A Sustainable Business Plan, sponsorships of our displays and our programs, our membership program, which I'll show you in a second. Smart Budgeting. Now, as we're being very businesslike in how we are spending our money, obviously by getting rid of the operation of a building, our costs go down dramatically. We can then invest that in the people we need to do this. Will Driscoll is here. Where'd Will go? There's Will. He's our Director of Sales, who's come on, which is now a position we didn't have before. Now we have one, and he's doing a great job. And as I mentioned about local board participation, in fact, on the 10th of August, we're having our first Virginia Beach Advisory Committee meeting. We've got representatives from a lot of great companies that have said, "I want to be involved in this." The excitement is really there. We've got some local companies that are really helping us, like Clark Nixon and others, with our programs. We're going to establish a membership program called the 300 Club. For $300, you get discounted admissions to our programs, get hobnob with our honorees, past and present, to nominate them, to be a charter benefactor. We intend to establish what's called the Hall Pass up there. You like that? Hall Pass, you'll be able to take that around to participating merchants in Town Center and Pembroke Mall, or anywhere else in the city. Maybe we'll do it at your restaurant. And get a discount, okay? So if you're doing something good for Virginia Beach and for the Hall of Fame, we want to give you something to help with that. And it will support our operations, and also our Math Academy, which is a tremendous program we have now, that teaches the connections between math and sports, are very math-based. We're already in 30 Virginia Beach schools. Dr. Spence and some of his folks are really into this, and are very excited about us being able to focus really on Virginia Beach, as well as schools outside this area. But really, we'll be right here in Virginia Beach. We have a very dynamic education director. Now, the state allocated money for us, which we thought was $750,000. We found out they took some money from us. Has that ever happened to any of you here in Virginia Beach? Where the state takes money away from you after telling you they're going to get it? Anyway, we're going to get that money back, we're told. And anyway, so that enabled us. They understood completely. And your delegation here in Virginia Beach was very helpful. Frank Wagner and Chris Dolly, and, who's my other delegate down here?
Barry Knight.
Barry. Barry Knight, because we have two unappropriations. They've been very helpful. Chris Jones, a lot of those guys up in Richmond have been very helpful for us in making, in allowing us and giving us the dollars to be able to make this transition. So between sponsorships, and that's why I mentioned Will, our membership program, the state, we know is going to be there for us, at least for our first five years of existence, to enable us to get established. I mean, this is our big challenge, get established in Virginia Beach. We're seeking free or reduced cost of products and services, and getting help from some companies around the city, or getting discounts on things, and then, efficient staffing, education, sales, and administration. I talked to some folks at Phil Kellum's office, and just threw some numbers out there, and he estimates that we'll be generating, you know, I think somewhat conservatively, as much as $42,000 in new taxes during our first full year from our events. That doesn't obviously include the new revenues that businesses will get. The Hall of Fame promotes Town Center in Virginia Beach across the state. As a matter of fact, that, there was a Richmond Times-Dispatch story just earlier, I guess, on July 7th, Virginia Beach mentioning Town Center, okay? Giving prominence to Town Center in the Richmond Times-Dispatch. A lot of people in Richmond don't even know we have a Town Center. Well, we're going to help change that, because we are constantly talking about and putting stuff out across the state, and talking about where we are, and promoting the fact that we're going to have this new Walk the Hall. This is a new model. We don't know anybody else in the country that's doing this. Most places, North Carolina has a state sports Hall of Fame. It's in Raleigh. It's in a state building, so the state, you know, pays for everything. We don't have that here in Virginia. I mean, our building is owned by the Hall of Fame, not by the state, not by the city. So we looked at, as I said, we had to take a hard look at how we operate, and go someplace where we get rid of our operating costs for a building, but also that we're giving back to the place where we're being located. And that's what we think we've done. Museum industry, and we've talked to a number of them, like, "Oh, that's really good. Let us know how that works out for you." And so, Virginia Beach becomes the Hall of Fame city. You know, last weekend, Baseball Hall of Fame was in Cooperstown this weekend, and the Pro Football's in Canton. We become the Hall of Fame city for Virginia, which allows you to use this brand for sports tournaments down at, you know, lacrosse tournaments, or soccer tournaments, or, you know, stuff that happens in the fieldhouse, or at the convention center, or on the sand, or whatever. If you want to have a Hall of Fame tournament, it's cool. We're also talking to Brad Van Damblin, if we have the fieldhouse, potentially a Hall of Fame café in there. So the brand is something that you can share at other places. It's not just at Town Center. It's everywhere across the city. And so, that's it. We want to thank the city. This whole conversation started, frankly, in economic development with Scott and Warren, and then got over to Armada Hoffler, and we, Ron Williams has been fantastic for us, and Dave, and I've talked to a number of you. I want to give some credit to Mr. Wood here, who kind of steered me over to Town Center, and has been a tremendous help. And so, we're very excited about this. We're not asking the city for an allocation. We're doing this on our own. And we believe we have a model here that can work and bring, you know, my responsibility was to the Hall of Fame, because I'm the chairman of the board, but I also live in Virginia Beach, and I live near Town Center. So I was certainly familiar and aware of Town Center and the people that are there. CBDA has been great with us, CBDX, The Chamber, this event that we're going to have on the 24th, Thrive, which is a 1,000-member millennial organization through The Chamber, is going to be promoting it with us. Wavy's promoting it with us. Sinclair FM 99. We've got, people are excited about this. We're getting a lot of positives. So that's my 20, 21 minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, Joel, thank you very much for the presentation. I hope you know that we wish you the very best, and we're going to be your biggest cheerleaders. Any questions or comments? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Okay. Museum of Contemporary Art. Ron, you going to introduce Debbie?
Thanks, Joel.
Sure, really. These next two are kind of companions, Mayor, members of council, and partners with, we have Emily LeBeauz, our cultural affairs manager here, and Nina from her office. And these are our partners. They've both had a very successful year. And with your support, the Museum of Contemporary Art, Debbie Graves, can give an overview of this past year, including the exciting stuff that happened this past week. And then, a former staffer from Moca, Kate Pittman, is now the executive director of the Vibe District, and tell you all the exciting stuff that's been happening down there.
We're delighted to have you, Debbie.
Thank you. I'm delighted to be here. Thank you. It's a wonderful opportunity to share with you some of the recent projects that Moca has undertaken. But more importantly, it's an opportunity to personally thank you for your support and all of our efforts to help to make Virginia Beach's vision come true, to be a cultural destination. So we're very proud to be a part of that, and thank you very much. Before we move forward to some specific projects, I'd like to give you just a general overview by the numbers of Moca. And I'm not going to reiterate what you can see or what's in your package, but I would like to call your attention to the very bottom data point that I have purposefully left blank. And that is to honor the request of Sunshine Magazine, which I've brought a copy with us. Sunshine Magazine annually in September ranks all of the outdoor art shows. And they gave me permission specifically to share our newest status with you today, but I wasn't allowed to put it in writing. So before we go forward, I'd like to give you a little bit of history. Moca's Boardwalk Art Show is the oldest event in Virginia Beach. Several years ago, then-city manager Jim Spoor gave us a challenge to make it into the top 12 of the Sunshine rankings. In 2015, we were 29 on Sunshine Magazine. And in September 2016, they will announce that Moca's Boardwalk Art Show is now number three.
All right. Way to go. We're proud of that.
At us across the country, we are the third top show out of 200. So we could not be more excited. May 2016, Moca opened the self-curated show Turn the Page, The First 10 Years of High Fructose, two years in the making, a benchmark exhibition for Moca. It was a collaboration with the West Coast Contemporary Art Magazine, High Fructose, that celebrated the artistic talent of 50 artists rarely seen on the East Coast and primarily viewed only in a two-dimensional format. As we hoped, visitors came from all over to see the exhibition. We experienced, on an average, a 52% increase in walk-in traffic over the previous year same time. We also captured data on those that came to spend the night and the day, and hoping to impact our, the economy locally. This data captures only a portion of the visitors, those that walked through the museum and paid admissions. We know from ticketed events that attendees came from out of the areas far away as South Carolina, Indianapolis, Maryland, Richmond, Florida, Cincinnati, to spend an afternoon with an artist, Crayola, when he came to town. I think everyone recalls that we had quite a bit of flurry and fodder over this particular exhibition. And so, all news is good news, and we were able to garner from this exhibition 27 million combined media impressions. So reaching the corners of the globe, raising the awareness of Moca and the city of Virginia Beach, putting us on the map as a distinction, as a destination, excuse me, which fosters creativity in the arts. But that media reach did not stop when the exhibition left Virginia Beach, because it traveled to Akron Museum of Art in Ohio, and to the Crocker Museum in California, where it is currently on display until September. We were noted in the curate, as the curators, in all their publications, news releases, as the company exhibition catalog, where the CBB's logo was prominently displayed as the lead sponsor. So these are just a few of the publications out of one museum where we, as the Virginia Museum of Contemporary Art, are noted, thus also in Virginia Beach, and happy to carry What did the visitors say? You have this in your package, but just to point out that some said, "It was worth the four-hour drive and hotel stay." Fantastic. Glad I could get over from Australia. One of the most gratifying and verifying comments came from a colleague that sent our Director of Exhibitions and Education an email, where she talks about her house guests for New Year's Eve. And she says she and her husband, speaking of the guests, are both artists, and she is currently an art appraiser. She worked at Christie's, and needless to say, has visited many museums in New York City, DC, London, Rome, et cetera. With that said, she has been continually blown away by what you do at Moca. High Fructose was an amazing exhibition, and we are so lucky to have had such great pieces on display in Virginia Beach. I couldn't find anything more validating than a professional acknowledging what that exhibition was about. In January, Moca brought the exhibition Mindful: Exploring Mental Health Through the Art. In three months, we reached 12,000 individuals. We partnered with Community Resources to deliver informed programming and panel discussions for adults and teens. And every year, Moca works with the area school teachers and students on a project related to a featured exhibition. This has earned us the distinction as a model partner with both Green Run Collegiate and Salem Middle High School. This year, the project focused on mindful exhibition. Students selected a mental illness to research and create a cloak depicting the mental illness of their choice. Through our partnership with the National Association of Mental Illness, some of the students and their work were invited to the national convention in DC this past June. students and their work were invited to the national convention in DC this past June. On the right, you can see the Kara's cloak embodies bipolar, using warm colors on the left side to represent manic episodes and cool colors on the right to symbolize depressive episodes. Trinity chose Alzheimer's, because her grandmother suffers from it. She used a repetition of colors, dots, to illustrate the constant need for repetition. Candina researched PTSD to understand how it affects victims, using branches to symbolize nightmares and flashbacks. She hung dog tags all over the bottom with wording. Carolina crafted a cloak illustrating anorexia nervosa. The brain inside the hood conveys, suffers anorexic thoughts, and the rib cage symbolizes the desire to be unreasonably thin. And our most recent endeavor is an artist in residency with Mazur, organized with Moca and the Vibe Creative District, and partnerships with the city of Virginia Beach Office of Cultural Affairs. The first of three projects unveiled this past Friday, a vibrant, defining mural on the back of the wall of the museum. We are so ecstatic to see this. We really feel now that people are going to know where we are, they're going to see us, it's, they'll understand what it means, and hopefully stop, circle back, and come see us. Moca is proud to be a part of the Vibe District and assist in bringing the internationally recognized artists to our community. So, this brings you currently up to date, but what's next? Wayne White, included in our Turn the Page exhibition, is a well, is well-known for creating the set of Peewee's Playhouse. A multi-talented individual, an artist, a comedian, and a musician. He spoke at Moca last fall to a sold-out crowd, with attendees coming from afar, as far away as Asheville, Greenville, Maryland, DC, and Richmond for one night. In September, Moca will present Monitorium, an installation exhibition by Wayne White. In 1862, the Battle of Hampton Roads took place, and the first ironclad ships met in combat on the James River. One of those ships, the Union Navy's USS Monitor, sets the stage for White's dynamic exhibition here. However, the focus will be on the intimate, human side of the story. A master puppeteer, when he comes in August for a two-week residency, he will hold a puppet-making workshop with the education staff at Moca. They will teach the technique to Virginia Beach teachers, who will then bring that technique into their classrooms. The plan, although not set in stone and finalized, Wayne White will come back to the, to the area to visit and to lead a puppet parade, such as you're seeing here, with the students and teachers through the Vibe District, if Kate lets us. So, that brings you up to date with everything in the past year and our next exhibition coming forward. Thank you for the opportunity to share all the wonderful things that we've been doing and our involvement in the community. Can I answer anyone's questions?
Debbie, thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions or comments? Debbie, it's a great report. We appreciate it. Keep up the good work, and congratulations on your position in art show.
Well, congratulations to all of us.
That's great. Okay, we're now going to move on to the Vibe. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm so pleased to be here, and I appreciate the welcome to come tell you a little bit about Virginia Beach's first arts district. But first, I did just want to personally introduce myself. I have not had the pleasure of meeting all of you yet. I have been a Virginia Beach resident since 2005, when I relocated here with my then-fiance. And I've spent 11 years working at Moca, and I'm so proud of how far they've come during that time. It was such a joy to work there, and they set the bar really high. So the Vibe District has that, that wonderful international reputation now. So my husband is also a Virginia Beach firefighter for the last 12 years, and we recently welcomed twin one-year-old boys. So if you see me running around crazy, you know why. But they will, before I even know it, will be entering Virginia Beach public schools. So we are a Virginia Beach proud family. So I'm very proud to be the first executive director for the Vibe Creative District, just 10 months on the job. So there has been a lot that has happened over the last few years that you all have witnessed. Of course, you know, art districts are nothing new. There are over 500 in the country, but what they are really known for is establishing and revitalizing important parts of major cities. So we're very excited to have that potential. I would really like to point out that it was back in February 2015 that you all first acknowledged us as a top priority, and would like to thank Councilman John Earn and Ben Davenport for their champion of that cause. Without you, it would not have been possible. So here are the boundaries, and these boundaries are very important as we go out into the community and talk about the Vibe Creative District. I always tell everyone it's two things. The first is a geographic location in the city of Virginia Beach, and we're so fortunate, as we mentioned, to be anchored by the Virginia Museum of Contemporary Art. We have close proximity to Interstate 264 and the Virginia Beach Convention Center, and great city amenities with the Virginia Beach Library, police, fire, EMS, all right next to the Vibe District. And of course, we've got that beautiful blue ocean just a few blocks away. So many of you know and have fond respect for our co-founder Andrew Fine, who's pictured here with me, and the goals that we've been able to establish with this nonprofit. Perhaps most importantly, is to serve as a vibrant center for the arts, culture, technology. We are not just an arts district, it's a creative district, and we really embrace that very broad term, to work with the local small, small-owned businesses. And here's our other co-founder, Laura, who's here with me today, representing the Friends of the Vibe Creative District.
Laura, we're glad to have you here.
Laura is very much one that had, had beat the streets and got out and talked to all those local business owners to help make this come together. So the nonprofit board is supported and backed by a business association of the local businesses that operate within the district, and also some who do business in the district, even though they might be located in other areas of the city. So, in June 2016, we had 17 members. Those were the founding members of that group that became the board. On June 2017, we had 69 members, and this month, actually in July, we voted up to 75 members total. So it's grown significantly, and that really speaks to the excitement and the need that this arts district is fulfilling for those small locally-owned businesses. In addition, it's really important to note that network. Those businesses are Virginia Beach residents, they live and work here, they send their kids to these schools. Some of them have walked those streets in the Vibe District for 30 years, when they were young children and went to school. So collectively, their reach on social media as a tool to measure that is over 220,000 people. So when we speak as an organization, as a group, we have a really wide range of influence. So the businesses have gotten together and with the artists and with Moca and other partners to hold monthly events to help draw attention to the district. And those would include both First Fridays, which are held across the country in many major cities. And then we also added Second Saturday as a daytime event to help, A, fill the need for businesses that weren't open late on a Friday night, and two, to give us some daylight hours to do public art projects. And of course, the Old Beach Farmers Market logo there as well. They are our sister organization, our older sister, that really came into the neighborhood 10 years ago and established a reputation that drew thousands of people every week down to the central beach area. In our first year, last year, we were able to establish two different annual events that we hope to recreate for many years to come. The first is Small Business Saturday. Again, this is a national movement that really recognizes and promotes shopping small on the Saturday right after Black Friday. So while we all certainly need those giant mega TVs at the big box stores, it's really important to give handmade gifts and local, you know, locally-made products from artists or other merchants. So 1701 in the Vibe District was the champion last year, and we hope that they'll be back on for this year. In addition, we did a holiday gift drive for the local nonprofit Stand Up For Kids. And this is really important for us. We worked with that organization specifically because it targets homeless youth, who most of them are on the streets, either in that neighborhood or in the surrounding oceanfront neighborhoods. So we were able to give 61 personalized stockings and gifts to homeless youth in the area. We felt like that was a really important give back, because of course, as you go in and revitalize neighborhoods and clean things up, sometimes certain populations are moved along or pushed to a different area, and we wanted to really pay attention to that. The Friends Group has a board that meets monthly. However, quarterly, we do offer business meetings that are open to the public as well. So we invite people to come in. This past week, we had one, all about artist opportunities. So what are the opportunities that happen on behalf of the nonprofit and the private businesses? What happens at Moca? What happens at the Old Beach Art Market? To really help encourage people to get involved. So as I mentioned before, we now have over 70 businesses. They receive monthly updates from me, in addition to calls to action as we have projects or things to get behind. So the small businesses have really stepped up behind this effort, and, and that, of course, is because of the city-led ordinances that have allowed for tax breaks and other incentives to draw that new business there. Last year, we opened nine new brick-and-mortar stores in the Vibe District. The year before that, it was seven. And also last year, out of the 1701, what I call our local think tank for the creativity of young businesses, they had 17 new business licenses opened out of that one location. So it really speaks to the energy and the creativity and entrepreneurialism happening in the Vibe. And of course, there are benefits to this community. For one, we do think that we're having a vibrant mark on the community. We're going in and getting hands-on and cleaning up. We've adopted the Parklet on 18th Street, which you'll see in a moment, but we want to help shape the city's identity. So when you think about Virginia Beach, of course, the top two neighborhoods that come to mind, or the top two areas are the oceanfront and Town Center. And I like to tell people that we are quickly becoming the number-three destination in the city of Virginia Beach, because people are hungry for that local authentic experience that the Vibe offers. Here's a picture of our 18th Street Parklet, which is a private partnership, private-public partnership. The fence is owned by the condo association. They graciously let us hang artwork on the back of it. And the city of Virginia Beach allowed us to adopt this right away. That was clearly overgrown, lots of trash and debris in there, and so since we've gone in and they've helped us clean it up, it's a really wonderful spot for people to discover, to walk their dogs and their children through. When completed, there will be over 50 murals here in this one location that will span over 200 linear feet, which makes this one of the largest public art projects in the city of Virginia Beach. And perhaps the best part of that is that it's mostly done by kids, amateur, and professional artists. And even, even the mayor had a hand in lending, to the paint-by-number murals that we did.
It was drawn by no professional graphics.
Exactly. Yep. And I know Councilman Earn participated that night. So what's been really gratifying is seeing the local schools want to get involved and have their students participate. This is a 13-year-old boy who gave up his entire spring break to paint a mural to put on that fence. These artists are not paid to do that. They have a very small materials reimbursement that is provided, but most of them are donating this completely on their own, because they believe in the cause. And our Creative Crosswalks, Virginia Beach is just moving at a progressive speed compared to a lot of other cities in the, in the country. I've already had calls from California, New York, North Carolina, many other arts districts that call me and want to know, how did we get Creative Crosswalks? And we only have three, but we're very proud of those three. And they do make a very beautiful visual representation to let you know that you have arrived somewhere. We are very excited to hopefully add five more crosswalks this year, and we want to thank, of course, the city manager for helping approve that process. Now, our goals for the upcoming year, we are a very young organization, but we have lofty goals. And the number one is to really create and cement a sense of place. We want people to know that they have crossed a boundary and have entered into the Vibe District. And we've been able to do that, start doing that in small ways, with the banners on the light poles, with the crosswalks, but we really want to extend that reach. Every light pole needs a banner. Hopefully, every intersection one day will have a crosswalk. And also, we want to promote the artwork that already exists. It's really interesting. I've been doing a lot of research and cataloging the murals that are in the Vibe District, and also the artwork that's on display, and it's primarily privately-owned, and it's on private business property. But we are very excited to, of course, have Moca and the crosswalks that the Vibe has done, as well as the 18th Street Park. So this is an interactive mural map that is handled and through Google Maps. So the goal is that hopefully, as you join up with your friends or you hop on your beach cruiser, you'll take this app with you, and you'll go down and explore through the arts district. Our events are consistently drawing huge crowds for the Creative Crosswalk at 19th and Cypress there. We had over 500 people that day. Some of the smaller events and the walking tours are gaining in, in popularity as well. I would welcome any of you to contact me at any time. I would love to meet you down there and take you on a walking tour. We would also like to find opportunities to create business incentive grants, to afford small matching grants to these startup companies who might need structural improvements or facade improvements, or things that will help influence and improve the whole neighborhood. So we're working with the Office of Economic Development on those opportunities. And then, of course, through marketing and advertising, hopefully all of you have at your spot there the newest print of our RAC card. This is, shows and illustrates the collective efforts of all of those businesses. There are about 50 businesses that were included on this RAC card at the time of printing. We do hope to update that every year. And we're also able to point out the grants that we receive for those public art projects that we complete every year. So that is all I have today. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Ben?
I just have a comment more so than anything. One, I would like to thank Kate Pittman for taking on this task. It's, I think it's been wildly successful so far. Debbie, thank you for everything you're doing with the Moca. And I'd also like to thank Emily LeBeauz for making sure that everybody stays on kind of the same track, and that we're moving the city towards a more creative type of destination. And so, thank you, Emily. And I think that we are on the right track here. When I talk to people who come into town, friends of my wife's, friends of mine, when they come in town, one of the first places we always go is to the oceanfront, and then we go to the Vibe District, and they love it. It is a genuine, sincere place, and so, thank you all for the work that you're doing. You're making a big difference.
Other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am?
A quick question. Since you guys started, how many new businesses have you had open?
So last year, so in the last two years, we had seven and nine, so it was 16, brick-and-mortar. But again, I think it's really important to note all the new business licenses that have popped up out of 1701, which was 17 just in their first year. 1701 is a coworking space that operates kind of like a gym, and they also are up over 70 members now.
Other questions or comments? Again, I thank you all for what you're doing over there.
Thank you very much.
Only problem I have, I can't ever get into one of the restaurants. So hang on, busy. But we thank you.
Kate, Debbie, Joel, thanks so much.
Okay, all these other presentations have been great, Tom Lady.
So, as, so may I, Mr. Mayor?
Take it on.
I know you all don't want anything to do with this, but, look, there comes a time in all managers' efforts that some things just are more difficult to handle than others. And over the course of the last six months, eight months, we've been working feverishly to figure out solutions to determine, you know, the extent of compliance issues that we need to reach in order to continue a legacy event that we've had here in Virginia Beach. And we just find ourselves at odds with what the electrical code requires and what the potential fixes available out there in the industry is. So, what I've asked Tom to do, and he's spent the last several months really working hard. You may even wonder why, when you, when you went to the Ocean Resort and you, you had lunch at Mahi Mahi's, and you looked out across the, the beach out in front in the middle of May, and you wondered why there was a reindeer set of Christmas holiday lights sitting out there. What in the heck the city had done? Did we just forget to pick it up, or was it some kind of crazy stuff? And it was all part of a system of testing that we were engaged in to determine whether or not we could meet some, some ground fault requirements that the, that the code required. So, Tom has been, as our lead professional engineer here in the city, working with, with all the teams and all the, all the electricians that are involved in this, from contractors to in-house. And so today, you're going to get a very extensive briefing on the particulars associated with our holiday lights, and we'll conclude with a recommendation and discussion.
I hope we start off being a Scrooge and then become Santa Claus. I got a couple of thumbs up here.
Mayor and members of council, I hate to bring you this shocking news and be the one to have to pull the plug on holiday lights, but, okay, I won't give up my day job. So, let's go ahead and go to the first slide, Sandy. Is it working? Never mind, I can run it if you need me to. So a little background, the program was implemented in 1995. It runs from Thanksgiving through New Year's. It has today about 321 lighted displays. They would normally put it on from about 2nd Street to 33rd Street, and involved a driving tour along the boardwalk. Over the last five years, the average attendance has been about 25,000 vehicles, and we've converted that to about 100,000 visitor, 100,000 viewers, based on an assumption of about four people per vehicle, but nobody was actually counting. The expenditure, in terms of expenditures, it costs about $450,000 a year to put the show on. show on. $25,000 per year of that has been to add some new displays, and about $60,000 has been to replace and refurbish aging stock. The fee that Beach Events charges is based on a percentage of the ticket sales and the commission sales, and that runs about $70,000 a year for the two of those total was the Beach Events fee. Looking at the revenues, that's also about $450,000 per year to put the show on. $300,000 per year of that is ticket sales. About $50,000 per year is annual support by the city. $45,000 is our sponsorships. And in the last few years, not on a regular basis, but on a couple of lump sum bases, the city has put in an average of about $54,000 to have to try to renovate some of the lights and that were wearing out. And that had nothing to do with this ground fault issue. Some of the lighting infrastructure was just simply dissolving and falling apart, and it needed some infusion of, of additional funds. So indicated, there are about 321 displays. Each display is made up of a number of panels. It can be a dozen or more panels. There are thousands of panels. There are hundreds of thousands of bulbs and sockets, thousands of connections that have to plug the panels together, and over 100,000 feet of wiring. These displays are owned by the city. This picture here is just a small percentage of them. When they're not in use, they're stored in a warehouse. And so what you're looking at in each little cubby there would be one, one particular display, or depending, it might be two displays sharing the cubby, but that's how they're all kept together. I've been through that, and I'll have to tell you, I don't know how Beach Events gets it all up and running every year. I do not know how they've done it. It's, it's actually, that picture doesn't do it justice. So we do have a contract with Beach Events to run not only holiday lights, but a number of events down at the oceanfront. Holiday Lights is just one of them. The contract does say that we decide if we're going to hold it or not, but if we do hold it, decide to hold it, Beach Events must plan, schedule, stage, and coordinate the holiday lights at the beach. And that is the sum total of the contract obligations in that contract. It is, it leaves a whole lot to, up to Beach Events and Holiday Lights to work out all the details. But at a minimum, obviously, they have to take those lights from storage, they have to transport them to the oceanfront, they've got to assemble them together, put them on these metal tripods that they lean against, light them up, we'll get into that in a minute, manage all aspects of the nightly program, keep the displays working for the whole six-week duration. And again, not as easy as it sounds. Then when that's all done, they take them apart and store them back in the warehouse. The contract never really envisioned that you might need some kind of long-term renewal and replacement program that the, these things would wear out, and that being it's a huge investment, that you'd want to be perhaps replacing 20% of them every year to keep the situation brand-new. So you need to keep that in mind. So again, keeping the displays lighter, light it up, it's a lot harder than it sounds. Storms will blow the displays over, and that same storm will splash water and drop, a lot of water will be entrained by the wind, it'll carry it up onto the beach, and they'll become saturated with seawater. They deal with a whole lot of vandalism and tampering and pilferage, people stealing the light bulbs, you know, for whatever reason, they, I guess it's a souvenir. They have hundreds of electrical failures, and again, this is before we get into the ground fault issue. This is 2016 and earlier. Hundreds of electrical failures each year. They're constantly climbing on the displays to change a bulb, or, or trying to, in the field, splice wires together to keep these lights working night after night. I think there's at least been some people, I've, every, I've been there about five or six times, and each time, they were, I think, everything but a couple of displays were lighted up. But some people have reported, I guess maybe in the aftermath of a storm, there were a lot of lights that, a lot of displays not working. But anyway, these repairs, I really will give Beach Events a lot of credit for their stick-to-it-ness, their ingenuity. They've, they've kept the show going for 20 years, and they've kept the cost low. But again, without this ongoing sustainability program, it kind of caught up with us, and that's why you saw that $220,000 request just a couple of years ago to replace a number of lights. So here's a new display. You can tell by the, looking at the color of the paint, but even after one year, this is a brand-new display. It's only been out in one season. Take a look at that little tip there. You see that little brown color? Any tips or sharp ends are going to be what we call high-energy surfaces. That means bumping them can easily knock the paint off, so you can see some corrosion starting already. But again, you see these lights, these light strings? For those of you that can remember when the old Christmas tree light bulbs were large, they had the big seven-watt bulbs, got hot enough, could almost melt plastic on ornaments and things like that. This essentially what these are. It's all exterior wiring, pretty much the same as lamp cord. But they come about six inches apart, and in many cases, the lights have to be closer to that. So they'll take that, those wires, and they'll bundle them up, and they'll tape them where they need to be. And you'll see a lot of that wire being bent. Give it to me again. See a lot of these little bends where the wire's bent sharply? That again creates a very high-energy surface where sunlight and sand and, and wind can attack that surface, and you tend to, after a very short period of time, couple of years in service, they'll start to develop little cracks at those bends. This one is, shows you ones that have had a few more years on them. Please note, here's a section of lights that just were unworked, couldn't make them work, and so they have welded another piece of steel on and brought down another set of lights. You can see where they joined them at the connection up there, so they could kind of, in the field, make these displays work. So let's get to electrical power. Electrical power for the holiday lights and for all the vents at the boardwalk are powered by 43 city-owned permanent power pedestals that occur along the boardwalk at about 26 intersections. They've been, they were, they've been in service since the mid-1980s, so they have about, they're about 35 years old, a little bit more than that. They run anywhere from 200 to 400 amps service. Put that in perspective, a household's probably about 200 amps service. And some of them are much higher. Holiday Lights needed essentially access to all of them. They use a number of permanent, temporary pedestals and what we call spider boxes. And until 2016, none of that had ground fault detection on it, or ground fault interruption. So here's a permanent power pedestal right there. This is the temporary power pedestal that connects to the permanent power pedestal, and these are some of the spider boxes. And so they would help these all along. Again, you have 321 displays and thousands of power cords and thousands of connections, and they will all come from those devices. And if there's a, other activities along the boardwalk, they'll use this exact same equipment. So the real grinch here, I guess, would be our arc flash requirements. We'll call OSHA. Everybody likes to get mad with OSHA. But arc flash is the resistance to electricity that, when you have a lot of electricity flowing through wires, either stopping it or starting it very quickly, just like a car that's rolling. You can't put your hand out and stop it very quickly, or if you need to get that car moving, you have to push it really hard to get it rolling down the street. And give you an example, if you've ever plugged in the little power supply, power supply brick for your laptop, and you saw a little spark when you plugged it in? Did anybody see it? Everybody experienced that? That is a very minor arc flash. But when you start talking about high, much higher voltages and much higher amperages, and you go to either break that circuit or make that circuit, you can get a, you can get an explosion, or you can get a surge that will cause a electrical, essentially a mini lightning bolt to jump from one surface to another. And if you happen to be a human, and you're the closest surface when that surge occurs, and it jumps through you, well, electrocution or severe burning or other damages are possible. 2014, OSHA revised the requirements for arc flash, and if anybody's, works at any place that's got a large power supply, you probably know about arc flash because you've probably had electricians coming through and raiding your devices and doing, either replacing it or doing certain things to try to upgrade them. So 2014, we were doing a lighting project down at the beach, and they did a preliminary review of the, all the power pedestals and found out that just about every single one of them had arc flash issues. And in 2015, the city did an arc flash issue for the entire city, all the sewer pump stations, all the buildings, all the, all the power pedestals down at the beach. And they found that three-fourths of those pedestals had serious arc flash issues, such that they were rated either Level 4 or Level Danger. So Level 4 means in order to work on that panel legally and safely, the electrician has to put on rubber boots, rubber gloves, a rubber suit, and a face shield with a mask in order to work on that panel while it's hot. Level Danger is the highest level, and those can't even be worked on legally or safely while they're energized. So you have to de-energize them. So what is that, why is that such an issue? Why, why don't we just kill power to them and do the work we need? Many of them don't have on-off switches. They don't have master cutoffs. Many of those power panels were wired straight into the transformer at the time. Those transformers share power with, with adjacent hotels and businesses. You can't cut, you can't cut the power to the panel without cutting the power to the transformer and cutting power to the adjacent hotels and businesses at the same time. None of the pedestals, the temporary pedestals, or the permanent ones, or the spider boxes had any type of ground fault detection requirement as required by the National Electric Code. Now, we'll keep in mind, the way the National Electric Code works, when they upgrade a standard, just because, let's say if you had a house built in the 60s and it did not have ground fault protection for the bathrooms and kitchens, and that electrical code is upgraded, you're not required to go in and upgrade those devices. But if an electrician works on your bathroom or kitchen wiring, he is required at that time to bring it up to code. So, so in 2016, after getting their report in 2015, realizing they had these issues, Public Works launched on a capital improvement program to upgrade all the power pedestals at the beach and to convert all the temporary panels, all the permanent panels, and all the spider boxes to bring them up to code with respect to both arc flash requirements and ground fault protection requirements. So the second, now, they did that in the fall of 2016. They converted three of the panels, three of the 43 panels. As soon as we got to Thanksgiving and Beach Events started plugging the displays, any display, new or old, into any of the power receptacles that had ground fault protection on them, they started tripping off, and they could not keep them on. Plug them in, it'd brown out. Unplug them, reset the ground fault detecting device, plug it back in, they'd go out. It was just, basically, they could not, they couldn't use them, and they weren't going to work. And the part of the problem, and the way, the way a ground fault detection device works is, it detects any loss of current to ground. Doesn't care whether that's a couple of wires that are brushing against each other, or a little bit of moisture that's gotten into the socket, or whether it's a human who's grabbed hold of a hot wire. The device doesn't know. All it knows is, if there is any amount of power that went out through the circuit and didn't come back in, it will trip. And these things are amazingly sensitive, amazingly sensitive. So give you a couple of an idea. If your home has been built after the 19, in the 1970s or later, you will have these devices in your home. They might be a circuit breaker in the, in the circuit board. They might be a receptacle in the kitchen or the bathroom. If you don't see, if you're in your kitchen and you don't see that every single socket has this device, don't, don't panic. One device on a circuit will protect all the devices downstream. So typically, a typical circuit will have six or eight receptacles downstream. You only have to put the ground fault device on the first one, or put it back to the panel box, and everything downstream is, is protected. So in 2016, they had major problems, and so what they did was go out and rent some available equipment that didn't have ground fault protection on it, and they just bypassed all these panels, these three panels. We were able to get through the 2016 show. But the, knowing that the 2017 show was coming, we started taking a look at, was there some kind of solution that we could, that we could implement in 2017? So what are the problems? Let me try to sum this up, give you a, go to the next slide, please. Let's, let me try to give you the, these displays are metal, they're in the ground, they're sitting in the beach, that's sand, it's grounded, it's, it is the ground. They've got hundreds of thousands of sockets and bulbs, hundreds of feet of wiring, that's each display. They're not waterproof, and they're not designed for marine environment. So water itself is not all that conductive. It conducts a little bit, but it's not too bad, because most of you probably put your Christmas tree lights out, and it rains, and you don't trip your ground fault detection all the time. If it rains real, real hard, you might, but after it stops raining, you can flip that switch and it'll go back to, to working. Trouble is the seawater. Seawater's 3.5% salt. Salt imparts just amazing corrosive and conductive properties to water, such that now the water is a very good conductor. So the GFI, GF CI tripping, the ground fault tripping is caused when you get a little bit of salt moisture penetrating either the light socket that's not sealed properly, or a crack in the wiring, or just the connection where the plugs, many of the plugs have to come together. It works its way in. Excuse me. Now, if you have brand-new wiring, brand-new sockets, sealed with dielectric grease and light bulb and seals, they work a little bit better, but they're not immune, especially after a storm. And the wear and tear from constantly putting them up, tearing them down, climbing up on them to change a light bulb, all of that, and the environment itself, it just wears them out very quickly. I mean, that brand-new display in three or four years, you won't recognize it. It's not a matter of the, these things last 20 years. Here's an example. You'll see this blue in this grain, that's copper oxide and copper chloride. They're highly conductive. Oh, thank you. They're very conductive, and you can see how the, just the salt moisture gets in there and creates these little short circuits, which before ground fault detection, they were able to keep up with. But once you put the ground fault detection devices in, it was just, everything just shut off instantly. So getting to the bottom line, I really have to say, over the last six months, I became really in awe of the things that Beach Events did to keep this show going year after year. I mean, it really was amazing what they would do. They had a show will go on attitude. There was no doubt about that. But even before this GF CI devices were introduced, they struggled to get, to keep those lights going, particularly in the aftermath of a bad storm or strong winds that just brought a lot of salt up onto the devices. Other people, we're not the only people having this problem. A lot of other people with holiday lights are counting the exact same problem. Ours is just 10 times worse because of the seawater. The GF CI requirement, which we cannot waive, is not, it's not an option to not have them, is basically incompatible with trying to run the system on 120-volt power supply. In my opinion, after looking at all the testing we've done, you simply could not run a show down there. Even if the entire 320 displays were brand-new, you would not be able to get an adequate, acceptable show for the entire six-week period, particularly in the aftermath of some windy event that carried, that brought a whole lot of saltwater droplets forward. So are there alternatives? We've been experimenting with 12-volt DC lights. And 12-volt DC is not a safety hazard, and the National Electric Code does not apply to devices that operate on 50 volts or less. Many of you may have landscaping Many of you may have landscaping lighting that you use. That is 12 to 24-volt lighting. It has connections that you make by hand, that's wiring is open, it's sitting there in the ground. It's not a safety hazard. And so we we kind of took a tact from that and said, well, is there something we could do rather than the 120-volt bulbs? Turns out, these bulbs look identical. They use the identical sockets. The sockets are on the identical wiring. The only difference is, 120-volt string of lights has 120-volt light bulbs in them, it has 120-volt connection. If you take all those lights out, put 12-volt bulbs in and cut off that connection, and just wire it up to a 12-volt landscaping power supply, it'll work almost as well. And we did that on a few and we had great success. These landscaping power supplies are all over the market. You get on the internet and you'll have 60 or 70 very reputable firms selling these devices. And they're waterproof. They can actually stick them in a bucket of water and then pull them out and turn them on, they'll still work. And they don't cost much. A 60-watt landscaping brick, what we call a power brick, will power 180 bulbs, and the 180 bulbs will cost about $120. The power supply will cost about 20. So the power supply are not expensive compared to the bulbs. So we tested a number of, tested a number of displays and, as we predicted and hoped, it was very resistant to tripping the devices. And essentially, the reason for that is, anything downstream of the power supply, the 110 side doesn't care about. As long as there's no short on the 110 side, it's just going to keep knocking out the 12-volts. So it kind of isolates the lights from the GF CI devices. We've only tested a few displays for a few weeks. Most of it's been on the greenbelt side of the boardwalk. We really can't project that success to hundreds of displays that are going to sit there for six weeks on the ocean side of the boardwalk, especially in the aftermath of a storm. We have some other uncertainties about the animated displays. The animated displays work by having several strings on a display, and those strings are put into a device that flashes the strings at different times. Well, as I just told you, you plug these things in, when you plug your little laptop in, you see that little arc. Well, we would essentially be having devices that were flipping those power supplies on and off, on and off. We really don't know what that's going to do to the power supplies and whether or not we'll be able to make any of the motion, the motion displays work properly. We also have another issue, try to make it as simple as I can. Before the ground fault detection was introduced, there were all these little short circuits and they would be siphoning off five or 10 volts of the power to ground. Well, if you've got 120-volt feed into your system and you've knocked five or 10 volts off, you're still sending 110 to 115 volts to those light bulbs, that's five or six percent. If you actually put a meter on your home, you're going to see that jump all over the place, depending on what's running in your house and what your neighbors are running. So that doesn't affect the lights. But if we have a 12-volt system out there and we divert five to 10 volts to ground through these short circuits, which will still be there, that will cause those bulbs to dim out. So what we can't predict is if you put a display out there and you light it up on Thanksgiving, everything's wonderful, they all work and their lights, and they say, hey, you guys are brilliant. And after just a few weeks and maybe a nor'easter storm or something, these things get saturated with salt and all of a sudden, they've all dimmed out. Won't be a safety hazard, but they won't light up either. So we can't, until we've done some real-world testing, we just can't predict the results. So we've looked at a number of alternatives. Back in May, when we were going through all of this, in April and May, we had originally had hoped to be able to come and tell you, okay, we could give you four choices. One would be a full-scale show. The other would be maybe a half of a show. Unfortunately, these bulbs come from China. There are hundreds of thousands of them. Converting the displays takes time. Some of them would have to be done at the manufacturer, some of them would be done in-house with Beach Events. And as we've worked through this issue, we really have exhausted the time we would have needed in order to put on a full-scale show or a half show. Now, it would have cost at least $1.2 million to try to put on a full-scale show, and about half of that for a half show. Nobody in the staff was willing to say that we would ever recommend risking that kind of money on something that I personally think has only a 50/50 chance of working. Just can't predict what's going to happen when we get these lights out on the beach over a six-week period, whether or not they'll stay lighted or not. On the other hand, if we don't do some testing, we'll never be able to answer that question. Again, a lot of people are struggling with this. Some people, anecdotally, we hear, just bypass the ground fault detection. It's not a wise thing to do and not anything that the, anybody in the city here would would ever recommend. And a lot of them are off the ocean, they're not on the ocean. And that's a big thing. If we were lighting these up someplace else where we only had to deal with fresh rainwater, I wouldn't be too concerned. But when you're out on the ocean, that saltwater changes everything. A final alternative would be cancel the program altogether. The staff is recommending that we invest about $175,000 in trying to put on a number of displays over, at either some, some of the solutions have been the parks, other have been over a several-block period down, several-block stretch down at the oceanfront, so that we get a test of what the weather will do to them and let people see them from their balconies in the hotels and maybe walk the boardwalk and look at them.
So, members of council, Ron has been engaged in conversation, as have other members of the resort community, to take a look at whether or not we can come together to invest in in Christmas activities linked to our parks. You can throw a million dollars at us if you decided that was the way you wanted to go. I can't promise you that what we would come up with would work. I can tell you that now that we have been made aware of the workaround that Beach Events did last year in violation of the ground fault code that we are, we are required to comply with, as your manager, I cannot allow our staff to go out there and create a workaround on the system that we currently have out there. I can tell you anecdotally that we have had incidents of shock, not serious shock, thank goodness, but under the conditions that we find ourselves in, we are not going to be able to put a full show up. As you have seen in the past, there is no possible way that we can do that. We continue to work, we can invest $175,000, that's a lot of money. You've heard Tom say, the best he'll give you is 50/50 on this. And if that works, then we can make an investment into our next year's budget to determine whether or not we're going to move forward with a massive redo. On the other hand, as we move forward with our event district, with our entertainment district, and rework that we intend to do, hopefully with the rebirth of our dome site and the advent of the arena and all the excitement that you heard about the vibe district and 19th Street redo, we're going to have an opportunity to maybe re-present how we, how we celebrate Christmas and the attractions.
John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, this is, I think, you know, 20-year history and, you know, an important part of our community. So to that end, we're going to have a meeting, I believe later this week, with myself, staff, and other members of the resort community to just brainstorm what the, you know, the next phase could be. And it may not necessarily be your traditional light display. I mean, it could be a laser show, it could be any number of things, but we're going to, we're going to sit down and talk about it and I promise you, we'll report back.
Other questions or comments? John?
I'm just making sure when we leave the table, what we're leaving with. Are we then providing no direction as to the 175 and we're going to table that for the moment and we're going to hear back from John later and make a decision? I'm just trying to make sure when we walk away, what are we?
Is that what you're asking for? Okay, you know, I would sit back and say, though, I'm waiting for y'all's recommendation, but I certainly hope you come up with something. I think we should be experimenting, so get back to us.
All right. Thank you.
And I hate, I'm trying not, I'm not trying to rush you, but time is of the essence. Two of our alternatives pretty much expired while we were struggling to get this, get the results, get our paper written and get in front of you, so.
Yes, sir.
You know, first of all, I did read all the material in the paper before I came today and I thought.
John, you're not going to believe this, I did today.
Very good. And it was reiterated here today for the public, which was great. But you could tell there was a, I appreciated the thorough analysis and I liked the root cause that you all did on this thing, because I think we often don't see that, so I applaud you for that. And also, I thought the pilot, if we go that way, is the way you would approach it, so you know it works. But the laser light show, I liked that I did.
Why don't I suggest this? Let's say, move with the pilot if y'all don't come up with something that the staff and all can, you know, newer and better. I would recommend that. Does anyone disagree with that? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, gosh. That's a downer.
There's a lot of good in that too.
Okay, Kevin, let's get on to something good. Wildlife rehabilitation.
Yes. Carolyn, you mind starting the slide here? Yeah, it's actually, I'm excited to talk to you about this this evening, because it's one of the fun things we get to deal with in planning. We've had a bunch of great site visits and a lot of these come through, so let me tell you first where this was generated. The state last year changed their requirements, where now, to renew a permit, they need all local approvals. Most of the wildlife rehab had no idea that they needed this conditional use permit to be legal in Virginia Beach. So about a year ago, their association invited Carolyn and I to give a talk. We went up there, we explained the whole conditional use process, you know, what it entails. And, you know, since then, we've had 10 applicants come through and we will probably have some more. And so just wanted to give you a brief run-through here, because what you guys look at is the land use, so I want to fill you in on what the state looks at and how they get regulated on that next level. So first, I wanted to get you in the mood. You may recognize this bunny, the official Easter bunny of Virginia Beach, but I wanted you to get to know his father, Darius. Darius is the Guinness Book World Record for Longest Rabbit, four foot, four inches long.
Wow.
And 50 pounds. He lives in England. Jeff, which is JR's brother, is on pace to become the world's longest rabbit. He is three foot, eight inches.
Darius passed away, I think, regrettably.
Darius did not, Simon did. If you remember the story from, he passed away in the bottom of an airplane at O'Hare Airport.
Right, right.
Yep, that was Simon, JR's half-brother.
Got it.
And Simon was only six months old, but he was already 24 pounds and something like that. So now that you've gotten, gotten in the mood, because, you know, I said this is one of the more fun things we do and dealing with Lord Roland Watson or Junior was, was a blast. But to get down to it, it is regulated on state level by the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. So they have their own administrative and permitting process and their own staff. They have powers granted by the state code, the same as, you know, our ordinance is. And here is a little overview of the, the goal is very important. This is reiterated over and over. The goal of these wildlife rehab facilities is to get the animals back into the wild. You know, there's domestication, none of that. It's that goal to get them as soon as possible and they reiterate that over and over. Permitting process, on top of our process, they have their own permitting process. It's a process you have to renew every year. With that renewal, there's an inspection of the facilities. Process itself takes 30 days. But what changed is now you need the local authority, the CUP, before you can go through this process. Categories, there are several categories. Category one, this is the novice rehabbers, less than two years' experience, they can provide basic care. A lot of times, you know, an animal will go to, go to home, it'll stay there for a few days before it can go to a more experienced animal rehabber. And category one needs to be sponsored by a category two rehabber. And this is, they provide basic care, but the main difference is they can administer medicine and they have to work with a veterinarian. They can mentee up to five category one rehabilitators. Category three is the professional. This is the one like JR's that you dealt with, the professional facilities that have onsite veterinary care, have a staff. Those are category three. And an interesting note, category three are the only ones that can rehab bald eagles and golden eagles. And then these are the others, this is more the support staff for these facilities. Staff doesn't need permitting with the state, nor do transporters. Category four can't deal with the wildlife, but they can help out around the facility. Here are the general conditions that they lay out for these rehabbers to work with. The important one is the last one, that my friend there is chewing away on, and that is, wildlife that is rescued or captured outside of Virginia cannot be rehabilitated in Virginia. And I'll get to it more later, but that also impacts the release of these animals. I also mentioned there's a code of ethics that they abide by. Conditions, this is just an example of some of the conditions that lay out to make sure that a minimum standard's met for these facilities. As I said, they have their own inspection staff that comes in and reviews these once a year and goes through them. This is a big one that we get a lot of questions on, and that's releasing the wildlife, because everyone has this vision that, okay, well, she's rehabbing five raccoons and then she's just going to open the cage door and they run around, you know, run away and, you know, neighborhoods don't want more raccoons in it tipping over trash cans. But that is not the case. The one rule is that they have to be released in the city or county they were rehabilitated in, and you have to have permission from a private property owner or the government if it's a public facility. But they do not release them from their own rehab facility. They're required to go somewhere closer to the animal's natural habitat to release. This was quite, and they get really down in the weeds with size requirements for cages and the thing is, the requirements too, they also have requirements in regards to, if you house raccoons, you need to provide a hammock. Or if you, you know, opossums, you need a branch or shelf. And it gets down to that detail, again, because they want the animals to re-acclimate to the wild as soon as possible. And then lastly, just want to give thanks to, there are approximately 25 home-based wildlife rehabbers in Virginia Beach. They do a great service, they support the SPCA and the city's efforts. And, yeah, a big thank you to them.
Thank you, John.
They don't have an online database where they're recording the people, they actually are keeping paper records and they have to go to each place to see a record of what the animals they've had and what they've released.
Yes, the Virginia Department, they do not have that online database yet.
And, you know, I know SPC doesn't always get adoptees for the animals. Well, the volume such that you have, that people find out there's not a place to release the animals that they have received, and then if that's the case, how they are, what's the disposition of the animals that were released cannot be obtained. What's the public property of the resort, release your blast resort?
Well, we haven't come across that yet. If the animals can't be released or they're non-native species, they would either need to go to a contained environment or they're euthanized.
Other questions or comments? I have a question. It seems to me, when we approve the conditional use permit, that's forever, correct?
Correct, unless you put a specific time.
I saw where they get an annual test from this organization. And believe you me, I'm not trying to say bring it back to council. I don't know if we, you might want to consider, you all do it thinking about it, you know, an administrative approval annually. That might be a way, in case an issue did come up with too many animals being there that we could deal with.
Right. And section, the state code that gives the authority to them also gives the authority to the local government for inspections whenever they feel needed. So we do have that authority.
We can have the inspections, but my point is, we really don't have an out.
We don't have a trigger for it.
Of the zoning. I just think about, y'all are much smarter than I am about that, but it seems to me, they're getting looked at once a year. We could have an administrative review, not having to come out to council, John.
I think maybe it's part of the proffered that it's contingent upon a chain of constant recertification from the state. And so if there was a point in time where that chain got broken, whether, that all, that there would no longer be a valid conditional use permit. But I think you got it great, I see. Because it really goes with the property, not even with the-
That's my point. You know, I mean, I, it was just clicking on me.
And the other, you know, one of the, the great things about the computer program in Sella that we use is, we can trigger an annual inspection to come up. So we can trigger that inspector each year to say, oh, now it's time to look at that property.
Well, then, we might think about just putting an annual review, subject to the CUP being renewed annually administratively, not by us. You know, just thought, think about it.
If you did it that way, then, if you had a problem, you could see if, because if you had a problem, more than likely, they got a license revoked at some point. And at that point in time, it would be voided at that time.
Yeah.
I think it's less overhead.
Okay, well, I'm game for that, then. John's always been brighter than me. Good job. All right, okay.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good conversation. Pending planning items.
Carolyn, are you first up?
Yes, sir, and it's just me today.
All right.
Well, we're glad to have you.
I love following Kevin. Yeah, so we weren't able, due to, um, advertising requirements, put any of the July Planning Commission items on your, uh, meeting this evening. So, we have eight scheduled for you on August fifteenth, and the remainder of those will be scheduled for September fifth. So I do want to point out that I did jump the gun by putting that Lord Dunmore Street Closure in this package that you received over the weekend. That's item number six. So that is not going to be heard on the fifteenth. We've got it scheduled for early September, so, my apologies for that. So all eight items are recommended for approval by both the Planning Commission and by the staff. We have three in the Princess Anne District, two in Bayside, two in Kempsville, and then one in the Beach District. This first request is a conditional rezoning from AG2 and B2 to Conditional O2 Office District, as well as a conditional use permit for housing for seniors and disabled persons. This is a request for a thirty-eight thousand square foot assisted living facility with sixty beds, and it's in the Princess Anne District and right up the road here from the municipal center. Forty-four of the rooms will be dedicated for assisted living apartments, while sixteen of the rooms will be designated for memory care. The applicant met with the Senior Housing Review Committee, as well as with the Transitionaria ITA Citizen Advisory Committee, and also received a certificate of appropriateness from the Historical Review Board, as the site is located in the Princess Anne Courthouse Historic and Cultural Overlay. There are two existing curb cuts along Princess Anne Road that will be closed, and vehicular ingress, egress will be off the private drive that provides access from Courthouse Marketplace Shopping Center directly to Princess Anne Road. The proposed single-story building is designed to reflect the neo-Georgian architecture of the municipal, the municipal center, and as the site is located in the Southern Rivers watershed, a, based on the recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan, a preliminary stormwater management strategy has been submitted. Staff has reviewed that and has indicated that their strategy will indeed meet our stormwater requirements. We are not aware of any opposition to this request. Item two, you have been briefed on several times. This is the request of hospice house of Southampton Roads. They have approached the city about purchasing two-point-two-five acres of a larger four-point-eight-two acre site for a twelve-bed hospice facility. As a hospice facility is considered a sanitarium under the definitions in our zoning ordinance, a conditional use permit is required in the residential zoning district. Along with the twelve bedrooms for the hospice care office and support space are proposed, as well as some bedrooms for the family members of the hospice patients. The proposed building is predominantly a one-story structure with a two-story center element, and the building's design and exterior building materials were chosen to be complementary to the residential setting. There were three speakers in opposition at the Planning Commission's public hearing. The first speaker was a representative of the South Shores Estates neighborhood, and he stated that while they would prefer the property to be a park, that if it must be developed, the neighbors do support the use as a hospice facility above any other use proposed. Two adjacent property owners, one across the lake and one to the north, did speak in opposition, and they noted concerns related to maintaining vegetation along the lake's shoreline. They have concerns about the future use of the residual property once, once the site is subdivided, the ability of the nonprofit to run the facility over the long-term, impacts to traffic and stormwater, and, and so on. So Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend approval on this request.
I thought we went to the public on this, Mrs. Henley, sometime ago.
We do, yes. We have, but, you know, there's still-
Okay.
I think there's much concern about what's going to happen to that residual parcel.
Yeah, I think that is the big thing I've heard.
Okay. So in February of 2017, a craft brewery was approved by the city council on this site, but it never came to fruition. So we have a new applicant who is proposing to renovate the property for a craft winery, and also-
Now we're talking.
A full-service restaurant. So a conditional use permit is now required for craft wineries. And in conjunction with the winery use, the applicant desires to host weddings and other similar events, so a conditional use permit for an assembly use is proposed. Approximately four thousand square feet of the existing building will be renovated for a tasting and dining room, and the remainder of the six thousand square foot structure will be used for the manufacturing of the wine, a kitchen, and some storage space. A fifteen-hundred square foot covered outdoor patio is proposed on the east side of the building, and per section two-hundred-and-thirty of the zoning ordinance, live music will only be allowed inside the establishment when all of the doors and windows are closed. So no live music will be permitted on that outdoor patio area. The Bayfront Advisory Commission reviewed the request, and no concerns were raised, and staff is not aware of any opposition to this item. This is a twofold request, a rezoning of approximately five and a half acres to create Phase Two of the Enclave at Princess Anne Neighborhood, and modifications to the two thousand and eleven parter agreement that would account for adding this additional property into the neighborhood. Phase One of the Enclave at Princess Anne Neighborhood consists of thirty-four single-family, uh, parcels. And addition, this rezoning will add an additional five-point-six-three acres, creating Phase Two with up to seventeen single-family dwellings. All of these new dwellings will be in the lowest noise zone, which is less than sixty-five, and also outside of the ITA. The application was deferred by the Planning Commission at their June meeting, and that was to give the applicant some additional time to consider some of their open space elements. And as a result of that deferral, the request was revised, and the number of dwellings were reduced from nineteen down to seventeen. So that has provided some additional open space opportunity. Vehicular egress and ingress will continue to be along North Landing Road until the Nemo Parkway is extended. The lot sizes, the new home designs, and the exterior building materials are all consistent with what was approved in Phase One. And as this is in the southern watersheds, and as recommended by the Comprehensive Plan, the applicant submitted a preliminary, preliminary stormwater drainage study, and subject to several modifications, staff is comfortable that their strategy will indeed meet our stormwater management requirements.
Did we test this against the model that we talked about, we did ask for parking? City manager?
I do not believe there's a model for this particular drainage area. It's part of those thirty-one that we're working on, and I don't think we got this one in. So I'm going to tell you no, and if it changes, I'll get back to you. But I'm pretty sure we haven't gotten to this drainage area.
Okay.
We diverted our attention to the more important ones that were affected by Hurricane Matthew. But I think they've oversized this drainage estimate. That's what Carolyn's trying to tell you, is they've, they've, they've put a lot more energy into, and a lot more squares, uh, acreage into, uh, capture BMP.
Thank you very much.
And one of the modifications that we are requesting is that these stormwater facilities be enlarged to meet our requirements, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
I'll just say, I had severe reservations about Phase One, and I still do about this. Uh, having all of this access on North Landing Road, uh, not that it seemed like a good idea to me. And, um, you know, it would have been awfully good if, uh, they would have cost participated or extended the Nemo Two that we're going to be building to, uh, to serve the veterans' care, but they did not offer that, so we certainly can't require it. But I'm, I'm, I'm serious concerns.
Okay. Item five is a request for expansion of one of two duplexes on this seven thousand square foot site at the beach. There are a total of four dwelling units within two duplexes on this property that is zoned R5S. Only single-family dwellings are permitted on properties zoned R5S, so the request is to expand the non-conforming use. City records indicate that both duplex structures were built in nineteen forty-six, so this was well in advance of the city having a zoning ordinance. The applicant currently lives in the first floor of the northern duplex, and would like to expand the square footage by only a hundred and thirty-six square feet for a washroom and a walk-in closet. So while the degree of non-conformity on this site is, is great, we think this request is really rather minimal. So we are not aware of any opposition, and, and we are all supporting this. Item six is, as I mentioned, going to be bumped to September fifth. And item seven is a subdivision variance for a parcel that has eighteen individual property owners. The property is being sold by court order in a partition suit. The over-one-acre site, we believe, is really excessive for this area of Virginia Beach, and creating two lots will be consistent with the development pattern that has occurred in the vicinity, and particularly on Reedtown Road. The two lots will be a little more than twenty-three thousand square feet, feet each, and this will exceed the minimum standard of fifteen thousand square feet for new lots in the R15 District. Lot A is proposed with a lot width of just sixty-eight feet, and Lot B is proposed with a lot width of just fifty-seven feet, rather than the one hundred feet required for new lots in the R15 District. So this is a request, two lot width, and it requires a subdivision variance. And we are not aware of any opposition for this request. Item nine, excuse me, item eight is, is the location of the Historic Caraway House, which was constructed in seventeen thirty-three, and it is likely the oldest surviving structure in what was once known as the Village of Kempsville. The house was moved to its current site in the nineteen sixties from its former location on the east side of Princess Anne Road, and the site is located in the Caraway House Historic and Cultural Overlay and the Historic Kempsville Area Overlay District. In the nineteen eighties, the site was rezoned from residential to B2 Community Business District. However, the proffers were very limited, and it only permitted the sale of antiques, antique reproductions, and related items and accessories. In two thousand and six, the proffers were modified to allow some additional uses. It provided for business studio, office, and clinic uses. And now this is a request to again expand the permitted uses on the site. It's a rezoning to B1A, which is the Limited Community Business District, and this will enable uses such as bakeries, delicatessens, beauty shops, and so on. So this rezoning will add additional uses and some flexibility as they market the site, while maintaining the historic integrity of the site. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the exterior of the building or to the site layout, and we are not aware of any opposition to this application. And the last item is a request for a conditional use permit in Kempsville for an automobile repair garage with a body shop and a paint booth. And the applicant desires to use a unit inside an existing industrial warehouse building. Repairs and storage of materials will occur inside the building, and no changes to the building are proposed or to the layout. And this request is consistent with several other auto repair and auto-related uses in the vicinity, and again, no opposition that we know of.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All righty, council, we'll now move on to liaison reports. Do we have any? Do we have any council comments? Yes, sir?
Just a couple of items. Uh, at some time, I hope, in the near future, I know I've talked about several times, but since on the fifth of May, we were notified that we are not able to fully exercise our three thousand per capita debt without impacting our bond rating. I have asked to come back and have someone tell us how much of three thousand can we use without impacting our bond rating, and I hope that is coming forward soon. Uh, and if we could get a status update on where we are with Forty-first Street, I know we had two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in the CIP, but there was no other authorized appropriation to do any work beyond that, and I don't know where that stands. That'd be great. Um, there was a great article, and it's on the Cato Institute site. It's a great assessment of the federal flooding program, which flood insurance program, which is up for reauthorization at the end of September. If it's not renewed, the federal program does expire. And as people's policies expire, so does the coverage, so people need to be mindful. That's a very important thing. We'll have to see what council, uh, Congress does with that. Uh, and if we could get an update about where we are with the, I know they were looking at, it was mentioned during the budget review, about a more family-friendly leave. I know that's something that HR, that the HR department's looking at. I'd like to know where that kind of stands. And I know we got a great presentation on the Vibe District today, but I would like to know the tax expenditures that we've had to make since we've had all those special tax incentives, and what would be the economic impact in terms of growth if we went to the General Assembly and asked for the authorization to apply those same tax incentives citywide? Because I think that they should be applied citywide, and I think we could get great growth out of that. And, uh, lastly, I brought this to the city manager's attention. You may, may or may not have seen it, but there was the Eastern Virginia Groundwater Management Study Report was released, and it went to the Department of Environmental Quality, and recommendation number twelve, uh, asked for money from the General Assembly, but if not, it was asking for authority to levy a flat fee on every business and every household to cover the expenses of the staff that would be involved with managing groundwater. I think the last thing we need is another tax and, another flat fee on families. That'd be a better way. But that didn't get much visibility, I can tell you. But that's in that report. But, but, uh, maybe at some future date, we could, I think I asked them to provide us a copy of that report, but it'll be interesting to see the findings, not for the whole area, but who in Virginia Beach is still, other than individual wells, a big groundwater user? I don't know that we have any, but it would be interesting to know if we did. And, uh, those were the items I had.
Thank you very much, John. Uh, other comments? Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Henley?
Well, everybody all over the city, of course, is, uh, very much concerned about stormwater and drainage, uh, this year. Uh, but as far as the Princess Anne District goes, uh, I had had, as one of the items on my, uh, district forum in June, uh, an update on the projects that are going to be done in the Princess Anne District this coming year. Uh, and there were several. However, the discussion went on quite long, and there were so many questions, and so I asked that we have a special meeting just on drainage and stormwater, uh, at a later time. Uh, and that's going to be tomorrow evening. So I just want you all to know that you're, uh, welcome to come. I think it's going to be a very informative evening. I've asked, uh, the Public Works if they would, uh, give an overall presentation of these studies that are being done this year, as well as the specific projects like Asheville Park, and Sherwood Lakes, and the, uh, New King Farm, and then also the maintenance and, uh, drainage projects that are being done in the district. So I hope it can be a very informational, uh, evening for, uh, for the folks in Princess Anne, and, um, I appreciate the staff being willing to do this. It'll be tomorrow evening at six over in Building Nineteen.
Thank you very much.
And, and sir, I would just like to inform the council that we, we kind of covered Asheville last week. We're, we have, uh, we have Sherwood Lakes scheduled for next Tuesday, and then the following, uh, meeting, uh, we have, uh, two, two meetings beyond that. We have the Windsor Woods Plaza Lakes briefing, and then I'm going to wrap up and have scheduled, uh, the last meeting of, uh, the last scheduled meeting of all your quarters. I'm going to come back and do another wrap-up on stormwater to be compliant with your quarterly updates. And when you all cry uncle that you've got enough, then I'll back off some of the projects. But I want to continue to schedule individual project briefings, and then do a summary at the end of the quarter, because I couldn't agree more with Ms. Henley how important it is to keep our finger on this pulse.
Louis?
It's my understanding that there's a development being proposed, uh, at, called the, for the airport.
Well, it involves that. It's, it's being looked at by a potential developer.
Okay. I, I, the reason I bring it up is, I'd like to know, when we're getting these presentations, what the impact of that is on, would be on drainage. Is it, would the installation of their, uh, proposed, uh, drainage facilities be beneficial or negative to the Asheville Park issues and the Sherwood Lakes issues and so forth? So.
We did tie up Hongo Ridge briefing into it last week.
All right. Well, I wasn't here.
You didn't get here. I'm having a video put together for you so that you'll be able to look at that presentation. And then we'll even sit with you and walk you through the, the briefing that we gave the rest of council. And, and since no site plan has been developed, we, we continue to respond to the, to the developers' requests and their engineers' requests, and the total determination of impacts, both positively and negatively, on Asheville Parks yet to be determined.
Paul.
Kind of related. I had asked, and I appreciate the clerk staff pulling all this together for me, I, I kinda remembered and correctly that we have actually four applications that we heard back in 2015 for various developments in that part of the transition area that were deferred indefinitely. One was actually 214, that was by Home Associates. And then three in 2015 by Home Fed, which is Asheville Park developer. They were all deferred indefinitely, and we never dealt with them. What, what is the status of applications that are that old, that were deferred indefinitely and never dealt with? Are we, what would ever happen to these? Would we, would they have to reapply and everything go through the whole system again?
They, they would have to approach us and say that they wanted to, you know, go through with the process, at which point it would essentially start as if they were submitting a new application.
Is that true? Is that, is that how, City Attorney, is that legally true? Council indefinitely deferred it, not the Planning Commission? They really have to start over? That, is that, is that really legally true?
Well, they don't have to start over, but they do have to-
What you said.
Bring it to us, correct?
To us, meaning the city?
No, to staff and say-
Right, but not back to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, they would come to staff, not you guys, and say, we wanna go forward now. And then it would start the process.
Yeah, they don't have to go back through Planning Commission or anything. It would simply come back to you as that application. If they wanted to change it, of course, they'd start over.
Right, that's what my understanding was, okay.
Sorry.
It really concerns me, because these are pretty old, and a lot has occurred since the Planning Commission heard these. All of these, the Planning Commission had recommended approval for, and council kind of had concerns about the compatibility and the drainage issues, and that's why they were deferred indefinitely. So I was just wondering what the status is of these, because I think folks ought to know that these are still hanging out there, and I guess could be heard by council at any point. I think the public would want to know that.
Okay. Any other comments? I, I've got some very quickly. First of all, I think we're all very proud of our school system, 100% accreditation. I think that's something that, you know, we, I extend our congratulations to the school board, the superintendent, the principals, the teachers, the students, the parents, everything on our behalf. I also had the pleasure of, and I didn't know that Ben Davenport was such a great golfer. Yesterday, they had a fundraiser for our Housing Resource Center of Virginia Beach Home Now. And Ben won it, but his mother tied him, so they had to go to a playoff, and he, and he, you know, he didn't quite make it there. But congratulations getting where you want. The reason, I bring it up for two reasons. It was in honor of Fred White. Prior to Fred's passing, I had the opportunity with some others to go meet and steal, and we got a three-year commitment from them for the Housing Resource Center. And also, I believe they made $100,000 for the Housing Resource Center yesterday. So that's great news. This has been the hardest million dollars I've ever tried to raise in my entire life, but we are getting, I think we're halfway there. So that, that is very, very good news. On the agenda, I would assume that everything would go on consent, okay? Also, council, there will be eight speakers already signed up for City View. As you know, I have a conflict there, and as such, cannot participate. I will be turning over the gavel to the Vice Mayor. I also will be leaving. I have a friend of mine whose mother passed away, and I wanna get to the funeral home for visitation. Okay, so we got the comments done? I mean, the agenda done, Mr. Vice Mayor? And the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes: personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews with prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1: council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees; and appointee retirements, resignations. If the press is listening or press is here, we will probably have a minute or two after this meeting to make some announcements to the press. Do you have a motion?
I'm moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Abbott?
I'm here.
Mr. Davenport?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer? He is ill. Mrs. Henley?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane? Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Burr? Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Sessell?
Aye. Thank you for giving-